At this time, I would like to call the open session meeting to order at 6:42. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, the Chair is seeking an adoption of the agenda.
Madam President, I move for the adoption of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Hold on.
We have some edits to the agenda. Director Watry?
Yes. I'm looking at, I'm sorry, the, um... There we go. Sorry, I have two mics. Upon looking at the agenda, I am motioning that we... I motion that we add the... We amend the amendment for the following items. Item 8.10, requested board action relative to the approval of Safe Schools Resolution. Item 10.4, Board Director visits to schools. And the informational items are future agenda items of Education Accountability Committee, Code of Conduct Task Force, RIT update, beginning of school update, certified and certified classroom support for the Finance Committee, the update of bond, bond timeline, bond council and names, Finance Committee update of vacant properties, the need for potential community advisory council, an assessment update, and the goal for 2020, 2022, fund balance and additional budget savings, as well as the action to develop a district-wide MBA and WBE policy.
Okay. All right. There's a motion to amend the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
In discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
How many is that all total, Mr. Watry?
Uh, let me do the count. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve.
All right. All in favor to adopt the agenda with the amendments? I'll say I... Ms. President Reagan. Director Brooks.
Aye.
Director Carter.
Aye.
Director Graves. Director Abram.
Aye.
Director Watry.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries seven to zero to adopt the agenda with the amendments. At this time, we're moving on to an exciting part of our board meeting. Applause, applause. Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Good... All right.
Good evening, board and members of the community. At this time, it's my pleasure to bring Ms. Marva Moses, who so graciously leads and works at Bethel Community Church, to facilitate after-school program for children called Hope Hangout. But specifically, tonight, she will speak to the board about a summer program that she has hosted, is it now two years in a row? Two years in a row, TNT. And there is a gift to the Admin Center that she'd like to present, but I definitely wanted to have her here tonight as we start the 2019-20 school year to be able to speak about the success stories and the wonderful relationships she's had and opportunity to build with students throughout the summer program. I know for sure, while I was there at their barbecue, as President Briggs walked in the room, one of the kids were really excited about President Briggs as she walks in the room. She spends every Monday here with us. And so, I wanted the opportunity to be able to have Ms. Moses share information with the board, as well as the community, about the summer program, and for her to be able to present the gift. And it looks like she has students and staff here with her. So, at this time, if you'd help me welcome Ms. Marva Moses also. I have to add, a Hickman Mills graduate.
Power's off. Is it being taped?
Thank you. So, first of all, thank you, Director Carter, for inviting us. We have had probably one of the longest... It felt like a long summer. Ms. Briggs, was it long to you?
It was long.
It had a little link to it. It did. We went from the very first Monday after school was out, and we did not finish up till the Wednesday before school started. So, we had seventeen eighth-grade, ingoing ninth graders at the Hangout the whole summer. We did have one week of a break, but they didn't like that, so we didn't take any more break time. Hope Hangout is around five years? I've lost count. And it is, in essence, kind of a hub for our high schoolers. The kids who either are not in a sport, don't have a job, but going home is not necessarily comfortable. So, we provide space at Bethel Family Worship Center through the Hickman Mills Prevention Coalition, that's a lot of people, to make this kind of project work. So, TNT, which is Teens in Transition, is a program that is sponsored by the city and through Nova, and we've partnered with Art Tech this summer and last summer to provide this. It's a process for, I chose eighth graders who were transitioning to high school, but it had a little bumpiness in their middle school years, and we wanted to make sure we got them straightened out before they got to high school. So, the administrators picked out seventeen of them, and then I also had five mentors who were older students that were going to kind of serve in the mentoring capacity the whole summer. I've invited two of them. This is Ms. Alicia Holt. She is a graduate of Ray Peck High School this year. And that over there is Ms. India Bowman-Nusson. Did I say that right? Nope.
She butchered it.
Nelson... I blow it every time. I never get that right. She is a graduate of Ruskin from this year. And they are two of, was it seven of you guys? Seven older students that were there to kind of corral the kids, whisper in ears, listen at tables while they were lunching, because, you know, they hear more than I could ever. And candidly, they know how to manage it a little better than I do. So, they were kind of the legs and the arms of our day-to-day operation. I'm going to let Ms. Alicia tell you about her... Yeah, hi. About her experience as a mentor. She's... This is your second year mentoring.
Yeah.
Yep. Come on and talk. Ms. Alicia Holt.
Okay. Hi, my name is Alicia. And like Ms. Marva said, I've been doing this for two years now. And I like really enjoy working with the kids. I didn't think I would like it, because like it was just so many kids at one time, I didn't know them. But like, being like a little older than them and like hearing like what they go through and things, and like being able to help them was really cool. And just getting like to make like a little brother, little sister type connection with them was like awesome. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm India. And proud graduate, you know, Lady Eagles. But, so, it was really good to connect with them, you know. I did it, this is my second year doing it. And it was fun, like going on field trips, seeing how they act. Yeah, a lot of, like, a lot of field trips. We went to the Negro Museum, Negro League Museum, and then like they learned a lot of different about their history. And then we also took other field trips to like the Nelson's Art Museum, and then we took field trips last year. And then also, like the Fridays, like whenever they have like a little program on the Fridays that they do every night, that they go out, like have a talent show or a fashion show. This is just like different, like activities for them to do. So, it was good to get to know most of them. Like I said, each everyone want to have a backstory that they have. So, and then like we made songs with them. It was just like a really good, like a family-oriented thing to where they can just come and like be themselves and get paid to have fun. You know what I'm saying? So, it was like this little good experience. So, it was fun.
You forgot to share your important news, though. Where are you going to college at next year?
Oh, I am going to go to UAPV in HSC.
All right, all right. All right, all right.
I live this Sunday, so yeah, moving days are Sundays.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, the program is an arts program at the core of it. And the young people of it did three different art projects. We did natural art, which was anything made out of anything out of nature, wood, rock, whatever. Then we did an audio/video piece that's finishing up this week. And then we did a visual art piece. And that is, it's probably one of my favorite parts, because most of it's in black and white. It's really a neat project. But we decided that we wanted to dedicate our natural art piece to the school district. So, the kids wrote on each rock things like education, foundation, support, pride, beautiful, just words of affirmation, and we wanted to make sure that it sat somewhere in one of our buildings. So, from us to you, TNT 2019.
Thank you, Ms. Marva.
My pleasure. The last thing, how much time I got? Thirty seconds? Okay. The last thing is for some of you who know Dr. Skinner, Dr. Carter, you guys have known I have been doing this alone since I've been doing it. Well, I've been blessed with a new program director. This is Ms. Nicole Weber. I stole her from another group. I don't feel bad about it. Anyway, she has been phenomenal, just kind of getting us through the summer with, because we had a lot, we went on a different field trip every Wednesday. And so, getting all that coordinated, she's just been amazing. So, this is us in a nutshell. School started yesterday, and we are back at it. You want to donate some food? We're welcoming food and water. And so, I think that's my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Marva.
May I just, if you would? I don't know, in your trips, if you haven't been already, if you could plan to go to the museum up at the Brown, Museum up in Topeka, Brown versus...
So, Michael Tooms, who actually kind of started this program, is who did the art for that. That would be amazing. That's an expensive trip.
Well, I think they'll pay for it.
They'll pay for it.
They'll pay for it.
The museum?
I think we have the paperwork somewhere. We have a paper.
Yeah, that'd be amazing. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. And so, the next part of ours, moving on, the next part of, thank you ladies so much, is audience comments. Mr. John Sharp, welcome.
Thank you very much, Madam President, members of the Board of Education. I'm John Sharp, resident of the district, and I'm president of the Community Assistance Council. And as you know, we read a, your old Board of Administration building on the north end of the Ruskin campus, going back a long way when that was done. And we have cooperated with the district in supporting Principal Torrance Allen's initiative to bring a Harvester's Mobile Food Pantry to our district once a month. And they took two months off during the summer, because there weren't students and staff there to help with the distribution. But the food pantry delivery resumed this afternoon. And when I say a mobile food pantry, it's actually a semi-truck full of fresh fruits and vegetables. And the cars were lined up all around Ruskin, on Ruskin Way, clear out to Blue Ridge this afternoon when it started, and it went from four to a little after five. And all of that food was given away to needy families in our district today, except they did have quite a few carrots left, and they had some blueberries. But everything else was distributed, and then we will get that tomorrow morning at our food pantry there at Community Assistance Council for people in our community. But I just wanted to let you know how pleased I was that that has been resumed and that Principal Allen put that initiative together. And it's great to see it being distributed, because the students and staff really help on that. A lot of students are very involved, so it's a great service to our community. And I'd just like to mention one other thing coming up. I'm on the Public Improvements Advisory Committee. We make recommendations to the City Council, as Mr. Brooks knows, for capital improvements for the city, and most of those tend to be our neighborhood capital improvements. They're things like sidewalks, street widening, storm drainage improvements, and park improvements. And our first hearing, we have two hearings every year in each district, and the first hearing will be next Monday. It'll be the nineteenth at Hillcrest Community Center from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And I certainly encourage the district to consider putting in some requests, because we can provide funding for district facilities, like athletic facilities, as long as the public can use them too. And I know we need some improvements on the football field, and also on things like sidewalks leading to the schools or crosswalks to get to the schools safely, because as we all know, we don't have an adequate sidewalk system around a lot of our schools. We have been able to add them around Ruskin High School. But I did want to urge the district to take advantage of that, and just thank you for everything you do for our students.
Thank you so much, Mr. Sharp.
Thank you.
All right. So, at this time, we are moving on to the approval of the July 18th and July 23rd regular session meeting minutes and the MSBA training minutes. Have every board member had an opportunity to review those minutes? Okay. Seeing no discussion, at this time, I'm seeking a motion.
Madam President, I also move that we approve the minutes of July 18th, the regular session, and the July 23rd, the MSBA training minutes.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those not? Are we all in favor?
We're good.
Okay, thank you. That's seven, zero. At this time, we're moving on to executive updates. Dr. Carter?
Thank you. Ms. Wilson? Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you.
This is the financial report for July 31st, 2019. You'll see the working budget for the revenues are setting at $90 million six.
Shelley, hold on.
I'm sorry.
Do you need to get in and be able to show it on the large screen? Keep on, and then he can keep working on it. You can. Are you able to keep talking while he's standing there, buddy?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have a copy.
Yep, it went away.
There it is.
I got it, huh? Perfect.
Thank you. Does it really sound? Okay. I don't know how to get this bigger. You do it up. All right, I need help again. Okay.
It's done. It's done.
You guys aren't going to do electronic voting tonight? You can't fix your computer either. She was hoping. I'm here, yeah. All right. Power off and power back on. Can we close it and reopen it? Yes. If we can speak to it, it'd be perfectly fine. Somebody has... Okay, there we go. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Sorry. Okay, so, the revenues for 1920, at the end of July, the working budget was setting at $90 million six. We received in 3.5 million in July, so that's the same as the year-to-date. The remaining budget is 87 million. We received in .4 percent, or, sorry, that should be 4 percent. And then June 30th, at this time last year, we had received in 4.7 percent. The working budget for the expenses are setting at $83 million five. At July, we spent 3.8. The remaining budget is 80 million, and we have spent 4.6. And this time last year, we had spent 4.4 percent of our expenditures. The new business items that you'll see tonight, the Prep KC Memorandum, these are the account codes that they will be charged to, and the pages that you can find them on the financial report. So, you'll have your Prep KC Children's Center for Visually Impaired Quantum Health, the Blue Springs Department of Heart of Hearing Educational Services, Nova Center, and the Pacific Education Group. The fund balance for the end of July is at 15.035 for the end of the 1920 school year. At the end of the 2021 school year, projecting a 19.128. At the end of 2122 is a 21.7. And at the end of the 2223 school year, right now, we're projecting a 23.154. Any questions for me regarding the financial statements this evening? Thank you.
May I ask? Am I supposed to put this up there?
Yes, Director Brooks.
Our projections are based on, I know the average, the student population...
Yes.
As well as the daily attendance.
Correct.
And what else?
Well, that's just, so you're talking about the state aid that we receive from...
I'm talking about to reach our projected fund balance goal.
Oh, well, you have your state funding, of course, that you get from DUCI, which is your Prop C, your basic formula. You also have your local tax, which is the current delinquent taxes. You have your financial institution. You have your replacement tax. I mean, there's just a list that adds up to that 90 million. There's a little bit of county money that we receive for railroad and utilities. Then, of course, our federal programs, which is all of our Title, Title I through IV are Carl Perkins, and we have this year, the comprehensive grant for Ruskin. So, there's just different items that add up to make the 90 million in revenue and then the expenses.
So, all of the districts, 500-plus across the state, in some way or the other, depend upon, on many of those. I mean, some of them are specifically just for Ruskin, I mean, for Hickman Mills. But all the state boards, all the state school district depend upon most of those.
Yes.
County, the DUCI, the feds, and all that.
Yes, and some get more in some areas than others, based on their economic development in their area.
I think one school district only has 25 students, so I...
Right, exactly.
So, the only thing we can do based on that is our projections and hope, and keep your fingers crossed, and pray that at least most of those criteria will meet in terms of student population and average daily attendance and that kind of thing.
Right. And what we receive for our state aid for 1920 is based on the attendance from the 1819 school year. And so, once those numbers are finalized and certified by DUCI, which usually happens around September, then I'll know exactly what the ADA, the average daily attendance is that we can use, that we use to get our basic formula for state funding.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
What if, how much does the accreditation play into this, too? How much do we receive if we get our accreditation points this year?
Accreditation doesn't factor into the basic formula, no.
All right. Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you.
And I would like to remind the board that the finance video was posted where Shelley went in, communicated additional details.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, as we all know, school has started. I know several of you have been out in buildings, were excited, been out in buildings ourselves. So, anyway, you know, what we do when school starts, we have basically a spreadsheet for all teachers to put what we call warm bodies in the seats, because when we start, we might have more students on the roster, because we rolled it over from the previous school year. And so, what we do is we wait and see who shows up when they come to school, and then we start counting them present. So, when we had warm bodies in our seat, we had 4,238 students come to school yesterday. Today, we had 4,520 students. So, you can see, you know, we're getting more and more students every day, and we will continue to get more and more students. We'll get, we'll continue throughout the whole year, but we're going to get the bulk of them in the next four weeks. We typically kind of start to balance out a little bit about two weeks after Labor Day. So, this is just kind of giving you a report of where we are. Next month, I'll start bringing my monthly report again, so you'll be able to see, you know, how we are compared to the year before.
I do have a question. Where were we at with the warm body count last year this time?
On day one last year, we were at 4,331, so we were a little more. Last year, on day two, we were 4,542, so about 22. So, again, see, we're slowly but surely getting there. You know, it just varies. So, you know, hopefully, we'll keep continuing to grow, because we are enrolling more and more families every day. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us. This year's and last year's information, Skinner. Next, HMC1 Summer Learning. Help me welcome Ms. Franklin.
Good evening. See if it's more cooperative with me. So, it's my opportunity to present some of our summer learning that occurred to basically prepare for the 1920 school year. Summer learning opportunities for both staff and students. So, it's just a brief overview of some of the things that we did this summer. And just in short, we'll be looking at benchmarking dates and participation, Prep KC Literacy Workshop, discovery, and some project-based learning trainings, summer learning for leaders, and then we'll share a little bit of information about Summer Explorations 2019. So, just quickly, those were the dates for our summer benchmarking. We had over 50 teachers participating in benchmarking this summer. We also had participation from our district and building leadership, just going in, listening to what the teachers are doing, and providing support, want to make sure that principals are understanding what's occurring during summer benchmarking, and just supporting the work of the teachers as they're updating the curriculum, updating the assessments, and getting all of the information prepared for the new system. This just outlines some of the objectives for summer benchmarking, as I listed some of that previously. For the most part, it's just a lot of work where teachers are updating some of the benchmarks and scrimmages, really wanting to make sure that our assessments are aligned to what the students are seeing on the state assessment. And so, teachers are using that data, they're using the Missouri Learning Standards, and updating all of the scrimmages and benchmarks to make sure they remain up to date and rigorous for our students. In addition to that, they're also updating the grade cards, and so as those standards change, the grade cards have to be aligned to what the students are being assessed on. So, those grade card standards are updated as well. The Prep KC Summary Summer Literacy Workshop. Prep KC offers a literacy workshop that's open to teachers. They can sign up to participate, primary grade teachers, for the most part. They are... For the most part, they are developing skills and strategies to create inviting literacy classroom environments and really trying to engage our teachers in a conversation and preparing them for, how do we make sure that students are not just learning how to read, but enjoying reading? And so, they are also working on ways to develop a more effective writing curriculum. And so, while we do have a curriculum in place, they're also developing additional strategies to help students want to write and love writing, which can be a challenge sometimes, particularly as students start to transition into third grade. STEAM, PBL, and more. So we had quite a bit of STEAM and project-based learning professional development occurring over the summer. We had over forty teachers and staff participate in the Discovery Summer of STEAM Workshop at Smith Hale. We had six teachers and a coach participate in the Project Lead the Way Launch Lead Teacher Training. We had middle and high school teachers attend the Project Lead the Way Core Training. Teachers that participate, we had twelve teachers participate in the MTC, M E T C Summer Institute that focused on STEM, computer science, innovative practices, and global connections. Global connections, I'm sorry. And then we also had four high school teachers attend Advanced Placement Training. And then, we also had summer learning for our leaders. We had our District Leadership Institute, July eighteenth and nineteenth, I want to make sure I got those dates right. July eighteenth and nineteenth. We also had a follow-up Principals Institute on July twenty-second. Principals also participated in summer benchmarking, as I mentioned previously. Principals also participated in the Discovery STEM Workshop. And we had principals participate in MENT training this summer. So they did two days of that as well. Next, I'll briefly go through some of our Summer Explorations information. So we had a short summer session, as you know, due to the inclement weather days. So summer school was in session for twelve days. We had eleven hundred and eleven students enrolled, and our average daily attendance was ninety-two percent. Some of our data from summer school. And this is looking at a comparison between the spring scores and the end-of-summer scores. And so, what we saw, if you can see there, we did see gains in our students in both reading and math. And at the middle and high school level, at the secondary level, just a little bit different percentages here, looking at pre and post for the assessments that they took. And we saw gains across Smith Hale and all of those content areas. And then at Ruskin, looking at students that, the number of credits students were prepared to take, and then how many credits were actually earned. We had five hundred and forty-seven credits that students attempted, and students earned three hundred and forty-eight credits, which was sixty-four percent. And then lastly, just some quick feedback. We do a survey of students, teachers, and parents. And just some of the highlights of that. As you can see, teachers really found it to be an enjoyable experience. And eighty-six percent indicated that they would reapply, which is really important. Ninety-eight percent felt like they were supported by the administration. And that's important because we need teachers to be willing to teach summer school every summer. So we really want that feedback from them about, do you feel supported? Did you have everything that you needed? Would you teach summer school again? So that's important. Parents really felt like the meals were helpful. Ninety-six percent, which is really, I think, important for us to know that they found the meals that students were provided very helpful. And students pretty much enjoyed summer school, eighty-one percent. And parents felt like summer school was beneficial. And then lastly, the students shared that they felt more prepared after summer school, and they felt like, eighty-two percent felt like it was a fun experience. And I always like to share that students also have an open-ended question where they can provide some additional comments. And I'm always pleased how honest they are and how very appropriate the comments are. We hardly ever have any comments that are not. And they generally talk about that they feel like they know a little bit more. They like summer school. I think the biggest request is field trips. So we always get more students saying that they would just like to go on field trips pretty much every day. But that's not something that we can do. But overall, they're very positive comments, and they really like their teachers. They thought the work was challenging. So I'm just kind of off the top of my head thinking of some of the comments that the students made. And so, it was very positive. Any questions? I know that was quick, but it didn't want to take a long time.
Thank you. I appreciate the overview.
Thank you.
And I really appreciate Ms. Franklin, how you shared the summer learning for adults and students. And that's really important to highlight the professional development that our teachers have committed to during the summer in preparation for the upcoming school year. We don't do that enough to highlight those summer learning opportunities for them. So I appreciate you adding that to the presentation. Next, Mr. Weekly.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. You could help me a lot right now. So a couple, in the June Facilities Meeting, we began the topic of, or actually before that, we talked about what we're going to do with our existing buildings that are currently sitting empty. One of the folks that I've made contact with in the past is Aaron Mesmer. And actually, I had worked with the Kansas City, Missouri School District in understanding, you know, how they went through that process. And that was a very important part. They've had, I think, thirty-six schools that they somewhat repurposed throughout the years. And so, I met with them and talked to them a couple of times now. And one of the people they lent me to was Aaron. Aaron is with Block Real Estate, and he presented recently to the Facilities Committee in June. And we, at that time, we thought it was important that we bring Aaron here to address the entire board. So, Aaron?
And they all have this. Thank you. Yeah, we've got a copy of the package there for everybody. Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam President and members of the board, I really appreciate the opportunity to come here and talk with you tonight. I'll start, and I know many of you were present at the Facilities Meeting, so I won't spend a lot of time on the background about who we are. But you might be familiar with Block Real Estate Services. The company is the largest commercial real estate provider, owner, operator, manager, and brokerage firm in the Kansas City market. We have a regional presence in multiple states around the Midwest and the Sun Belt with lots of different real estate experience, different types of real estate experience, both in leasing, investment, brokerage, and sales. I do think that we have quite a bit of experience with not only private groups that are buying and selling or leasing real estate, but also a lot of different groups that are specifically in the public-private realm or specifically in the public realm. And that experience is really valuable when we're approaching an assignment like this or a potential assignment like this. My biography's in there. I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about it. Adam Bernard is also the other individual who is at the Facilities Meeting. He has a great excuse for not being here tonight. He is getting married on Saturday. And so, I told him, in the interest of his future marriage, it would probably be better for me to do this one by myself. But he's a good guy and also well-versed in the school sales. Dan mentioned our experience with Kansas City Public Schools, and that really is the most relevant experience that we would bring to bear on any assignment that we had with your district. We were actually engaged by the district in two thousand and seven. Dave Smith, at the time, was the president of the board. I knew him from the Boys and Girls Clubs. And at the time, they had declared three properties, surplus properties. We went through the process of helping dispose of those properties. One of them was the Norman School, which is, you know, Southwest Trafficway. It's now been repurposed into a multifamily property. But we went through that process thinking that that was going to be a relatively brief assignment. And then Dr. Covington, as superintendent, worked with the board to close thirty-three schools, I think, at the time. And so, our assignment grew from what we thought was going to be maybe a year-long arrangement to something that now has persisted into its twelfth year. So we're very fortunate to have the opportunity to work with them on those projects. There are a lot of very unique ways to go about dealing with not only public real estate, but real estate that has very special purpose in nature, you know, in particular, these buildings. There's a couple of case studies in your books that talk about some of the transactions that we've helped them with. And what we wanted to show you was a lot of the middle school and elementary school transactions, which are most similar to the three properties that have been declared surplus here. The first is Westport Middle School. For those that haven't been there since the repurposing, I would encourage you to go. They did a beautiful job on restoring the old theater, turning it into PlexPod, which is a shared office space facility, and just really a neat deal overall. We sold that property, and what you'll see, we'll talk a little bit about pricing and kind of what these deals have brought. But obviously, that one was about a million and a half dollars at the time. Most of the deals that we've done with KCPS have been in the eight to twelve dollar a foot range. That depends on the condition of the building. It depends on the location of the property, and it depends on the potential reuses and what other things are available. Bancroft Elementary is another one that's been recently restored. That one was done, actually, that was quite a while ago. But that was done by Dowmark, Jim Nichols Group. And what you'll also see in most of these projects is that there's some level of public-private partnership, whether there's a tax abatement, whether there's low-income housing tax credits, whether there's historic tax credits, new markets. There's typically something happening in those transactions that gives them the opportunity to move forward with the project. Blenheim School is another one that recently came on board as a senior project, affordable senior project. That was very exciting. And then Derek Thomas Academy. And I actually put this one in here in part because it's not a Kansas City Public School property. We have, by virtue of the nature of our relationship with the district, been asked to work with KIP. In this case, we worked with the lender who had foreclosed on the Derek Thomas Academy. But we sort of became the default school sales team in the market here. And so, one of the things that you'll note here is that the price is quite a bit higher than the Kansas City Public Schools' normal pricing. One of the things that helps drive that particular pricing in this case is they actually were able to sell the building without a competitive use restriction to another charter school. They sold it to Academy Lafayette in this case. And so, what you can see is there's a pretty big price differential between selling to, selling schools to other schools as compared to selling schools that need to be adaptively reused, that are going to require a lot of dollars to repurpose. In terms of the properties that the Hickman Mills District has, we were fortunate to have the opportunity to tour those with Dan and get through the buildings. I've been through a lot of empty buildings, some of which have been empty for a decade or more. And I was very pleased to see that, in the case of our tours, they were either still operating schools, so they were in great shape, or in the case of Old Smith Hale, still very well-maintained. So I think that's a big plus across the board. In terms of some of the advantages, maybe versus some of the challenges, I'll just walk through those briefly on each of the buildings. We like the Old Smith Hale School because of its size. And it's very large, so if you have a large user that you might find a campus setting, you know, you have all of the facilities there. You have a large cafeteria, big gymnasium, great athletic fields, and it sits on a great big piece of property, which is similar to the property. We sold the Robuson School at Eighty-Second and Truist, where the buyer, in that particular case, was able to do new ground-up senior, but they also entered into a community benefits agreement with the neighborhood to repurpose some of the existing facilities for a community center. So it has that type of potential. The same note is that a school that size brings a little bit of a challenge to it because it limits the number of buyers and potential reuses that you could have. There's only so many groups in town that can take on a hundred and twenty thousand-foot facility. So you're looking for somebody with a deeper balance sheet, more experience, and really a greater need in terms of their overall space. The other thing that I thought was maybe a potential challenge is those trailers. I would recommend to the board just having those yanked off and disposed of or put somewhere else. I think they're a drawback to the site. But overall, you know, again, with the large facilities, large land area, proximity to Longview Lake, those are some of the advantages there. Going on to Symington, which we were actually touring in, the school was in session there, so it was kind of fun to see. The size of that one's quite a bit smaller. So again, if you have a smaller organization or maybe a group of smaller organizations that want to band together, you do have the potential of doing a transaction there. You're also proximate to Longview Lake there, and you do have the big athletic field there outside of the building. Some of the challenges might be that the cafeteria gym area is relatively small and is a shared facility, and that there are multiple elevations within the building. And so, it's not on one plane. You have the step-down with the ramp kind of right at the front door when you walk in. So it's just something that you have to take into account when you're looking at, you know, particularly ADA compliance or anything like that on a go-forward basis. And then Johnson was the last one that we toured. Again, similar size to Symington. One of the things that we liked about Johnson was that because it had previously been owned by Cerner, there had been a number of upgrades done throughout the property, so it looked very nice. You know, Cerner may be a natural, built-in buyer. I don't know with the expansion that they're doing at their campus there if that's really something that they need, but certainly a conversation that we would have. The challenges at Johnson are really born out of its non-traditional floor plan. I mean, I had to get the map out and like orient myself on where we were going, what hallway, because the way that it's put together with kind of the hub-and-spoke model is not as traditional as a linear rectangle-type deal. And that one's probably the one that is most tucked into a residential neighborhood. And so, when you think about other uses, when you think about things that could potentially drive traffic or have to be compatible in a neighborhood setting, you really have to take that into account as well as sort of what your limited visibility and access might be and that sort of thing. So, you know, that's a really broad overview of those. Happy to talk in more detail, obviously, about any of those facilities. Dan asked me to share this, too, which was something that was important in the work that we did with Kansas City Public Schools, which is the law that governs the disposition of schools. One of the things that Missouri has in their statute, for whatever reason, is that in the disposition of these properties, there's kind of two paths you can go down. And one is effectively a public auction, where you take the highest price and you move on from the property. The other is engaging a broker with the market. And once you do that, you're basically free to dispose of the property in whatever manner the district sees fit. And so, that's partly one of the reasons why the district has us engaged for so long. It really gives them a lot of flexibility to do what they want to do. In the particular instance of the Norman School, which was one of the very first deals that we did with KCPS, we actually had an auction to sell the property, but it was a private auction. You know, it wasn't a deal where anybody could attend. You had to be a qualified buyer. And the district actually elected to take the second-place bid. But because they had hired a broker, that was legal. The first-place bid, the top bid, actually challenged that. They filed a lawsuit, and the lawsuit was dismissed at the very first hearing. I had the privilege of paying my own legal fees for that one. But it set a good precedent for us and for the district in terms of the flexibility. But that's the nature of the statute there. And then, one thing that is different from the timeline that we shared with you at the Facilities Meeting is we included in that presentation sort of what we would do on a traditional property. What we've done here in this timeline is really updated it to match our experience with public properties, school district properties, things of that nature. And what you'll see is the marketing timeframe is typically a little bit longer. You're probably looking at being in the market for three to six months. But probably more importantly is you typically will see a due diligence period. So the time from when you enter into a sale agreement until the time that a buyer may waive their deposit, go non-refundable, and be in a position to close is typically longer. And that's for two reasons. The first is oftentimes, you're going through a process to obtain entitlements. And most of the time, these buildings aren't zoned correctly, or if they are zoned, they require some sort of special use variance for whatever the use might be. Those things take time to go through whatever the governing authorities might be to obtain. And the other is what we talked about earlier, where there may be some public-private partnership. And the other is what we talked about earlier, where there may be some public-private partnership that is helping to fund the deal, and those things simply take a lot of time to put together. And so a lot of times, that's what you'll see in terms of the timeframe, although I can tell you that we've had deals that have been in diligence in in some cases for a matter of two years, as there were repeat li-tech applications and things like that, as we did extensions with the buyer and so forth. But so that that is different from the facilities meeting, I wanted to highlight that. From our standpoint, certainly happy to answer any questions, but from a procedural basis, the next steps for us, if you are so inclined to engage block, would be to work through a listing agreement. Fortunately, we have a good template with Kansas City Public Schools. We're happy to provide that to Dan. If we haven't already, we might have. And and then obviously subject to legal approval and board approval. So certainly certainly happy to do that, but happy to be transparent about that as well. So at this point in time, I'll stop talking and and maybe take questions that you might have of me relative to our firm, the properties, or the process.
First, I'd just like to take a few minutes of thank you for your presentation. And the Board of Education has reviewed this information and reviewed the state statute and the policies in which we are governed by to do this. And we've also referred to our legal counsel for their best recommendations as well. And we're we're looking forward to taking action soon on our vacant buildings.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
All right, we're moving on to consent items, and all of these items have been reviewed. And we're going to approve them all at once, take action on them all at once. At this time, the chair is seeking a motion.
Chair, since these came before the Finance Committee, I would move that all those items on the consent docket be voted on, and I so move.
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those not? Motion carries seven to zero to accept items eight point one through eight point ten. Seven to zero. At this time, we're moving on to a new business items. The District Daycare closing.
You asked him to prepare the memo and bring it back.
Okay, you're preparing the memo. Okay.
Good evening, again. In May, I brought the agenda item of closing the daycare, and at that time, it was the Board's wishes that I come and bring an update in August. And so I brought one to the Finance Committee, and I'm going to share that with you. If you will look, I I gave this sheet to everybody at your seats. And basically, I'm going to have to take a moment to explain this. I don't know if it can come up on the screen. It's kind of small since it's, ah, it's not bad. So on the left-hand side, it says License Center. And what we have done is we have done some research. Ms. Gail Wood, who is with me this evening, who runs the early liaison for the daycare, she called around and every licensed daycare within the Hickman Mill Zone, she put their down their name and address and phone number. And then right next to it, you see the infant care cost, six-weeks-and-two-year program, and you'll see two columns there. One is like six weeks to two years old, and one is ages two and over. And before I talk about the third column, I want to kind of skip all the way over to the last couple of boxes. You'll see that it says "State Pays" in one box. And underneath it, it says "Birth to age two," and then in parentheses, "One-half-hour to three." And it gives you a daily rate of fifteen dollars and twenty-five cents, or seventy-six twenty-five per week. If you go just one below that, it says "Birth to age two," in parentheses, "Three to five hours," and it gives you a slightly different rate of eighteen oh eight daily, or ninety dollars and forty cents per week. And then again, the last one is, or not the last one, but the last one of "Birth to age two," in parentheses, is "Five hours and over," and you have a daily rate of twenty-five-point-seventy-five, or one-twenty-five-seventy-five per week. And then the bottom three boxes talk about ages two through five, in the same type of increments, a half-hour to three, three to five hours, and five hours or over, and it gives you different daily rates as well as weekly rates. So if you look at the middle column, which is the infant cost, you'll see, friends, and I'll just pick one of them, Edlund Child Care Center. And I'm using this for illustration purposes. We are not endorsing one over the other. All we're trying to do is share information. You can see that six weeks to two years old is a hundred and twenty-five dollars a week, or if the child is age two or over, it's a hundred dollars a week. So then you would go over and you look at the third block down there that basically says "Birth to age two," and for that, it is twenty-five-seventy-five daily, or a hundred and twenty-five-seventy-five dollars per week. And so then if you go down to the bottom, age two through five, and it says fifteen dollars daily, or seventy-five dollars per week. So on the six-week to two-year-olds, with a hundred and twenty-five dollars a week and a reimbursement from the state of a hundred and twenty-five-seventy-five per week, you can see there's no cost to the parent or the, so and then if you look at the age two, since it is a hundred dollars a week and the state pays seventy-five dollars per week, it would be a cost of twenty-five dollars. And that's the way it works for each one of these facilities. So wanted to bring you those, I guess, facilities within the district and kind of explain how this sheet's worked. We could make this sheet available, of course, to all of our students. We can do it through our parents as teachers, we can do it through our councils, we can do it through other individuals. Right now, currently, we have zero applications turned in for the daycare. And so with all this information, bringing this update, it is the superintendent's recommendation that we close the daycare.
Is there any discussion?
I just have, I'm, was any of this information sent out prior to enrollment around?
Are you talking about for recruitment?
Yes.
Oh, oh, yeah. There were, there were daycare workers at centralized enrollment, and kind of because this is kind of confidential, and we're trying to protect, you know, the discretion of the student, you know, we have a variety of ways of talking with the students. And again, so at enrollment, we had nurses there, we had the daycare workers there, and, you know, I don't like to go up and ask a woman if she's expecting, to be honest, but, you know, a daycare worker and a nurse might be a little bit more observant. They might reach out to the young lady and say, hey, you know, if it seems very obvious, and ask them, and then they kind of give them support. So once a student is identified at those locations, you know, we did go ahead and have daycare workers. In fact, to be honest, we gave three applications out to students. We've just received none back.
I think you really have to be careful about asking a lady that.
Oh, I don't.
I was at Walmart, I was at Walmart a few weeks ago and asked this lady, when was she expecting? She said, I'm not pregnant. I felt very bad. If I could have turned red, I'd have turned red, but I felt very bad about it.
I I don't ask, but, you know, again, a daycare worker that spends a lot of time with, you know, mothers that are expecting and nurses, you know, they make her a little bit more comfortable doing that. Again, I do not.
She was not, she was not expecting, but she looked like she was, but I was so embarrassed. I started to just walk off and leave my change.
Was there any more discussion?
Yes, Ms. Wood, can you please stand? Thank you for putting all this information together. I can only imagine how hard it was to call and track down every last, all this information, especially within the timeframe you were given to to get it. I really appreciate you providing us with this information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, if there's no more discussion, yes.
My arm couldn't reach, I'm sorry. Well, I guess this is direct to Ms. Wood again. Do you have any knowledge of the Early Head Start Program and how we could implement that to in the district at all?
I have personally not worked with Head Start. I know there are others in the district that have and do.
I spoke with one of the family liaisons, and they're saying that with the Early Head Start Program, the state would pay more and kind of it would offset that cost, but they would have to turn, I guess, put the daycare over in Freedom Markley. So I just wanted to know if that's something we had considered.
Well, if the daycare was going to be here next year, we would put it at Freedom Markley. I will let you know, and I don't know all of the details, but we did have Head Start when I came into the district. But due to a lot of the regulations and it it costs, it it costs more than it seemed to be worth, and the superintendent at the time thought it would be best not to have a Head Start Program any longer.
Is there any more questions?
Thank you.
Chair is seeking a motion for the superintendent's recommendation on daycare.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation to close the daycare center.
It has been moved in second that we accept the superintendent's recommendation on the closing of the District Daycare. I'm going to turn it back over to the chair now.
Okay. Vice President Reagan.
No.
Director Brooks.
Aye, yes.
Director Carter.
No.
Director Graves. Director Abram.
Nay.
Director Watery.
Yes?
Yes. Sorry.
Chair votes no, motion does not carry at this time.
Thank you.
Next, Ms. Franklin with item nine point two. Good evening, again. I'm presenting on our technology surplus items. The Technology Department will be sending the items listed below out of district for surplus. These items will be removed from the inventory system once they are approved for surplus and removal from the district. As you can see, the table below outlines the items that we're referencing. The above equipment will be removed from the district. It is unusable, failed, and no longer viable to be used. The superintendent recommends the approval of the removal of surplus items no longer serviceable to the school system and authorizes the appropriate disposal of these items.
At this time, we're seeking a recommendation to remove the surplus items from the school.
Madam President, I motion that we, the Board takes action to removing of surplus technology items from schools.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Vice President Reagan.
Aye.
Director Brooks.
Aye.
Director Carter.
Aye.
Director Graves. Director Abram.
Aye.
Director Watery.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item nine point three, Mr. Weekly and Ms. Grenon Sims.
Yeah, with me tonight is Grenon Sims, our Director of Nutrition Services. She's here to make sure I don't make this, make an error here. But basically, we go through a review. The Nutrition Services goes through a territorial administrative review, and and we went through that review in January of two thousand nineteen. One of the issues that came up in this review was that our adult meal prices were not, we were not charging enough for adult meal prices, and according to the formula that USDA gives us because we're a hundred percent free and reduced lunch, school district. So I've put the formula down there for you, and basically what it is, is that they take the reimbursable meals and plus the commodities that it takes to cover that meals, and that comes up with the price for adult meals. We were charging way too little for our adults, and so we were out of compliance for that. And we're asking that the Board approve the the increase in adult meal prices so we can be in compliance with the USDA regulations. And we're, so we're asking, superintendent recommends the increase in adult meal prices to three seventy-five for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. In addition to that, we also added the other attachment that you have on ESP, gives you all the meal prices for really across the metropolitan area. So if you wanted to approve those, you can see the differences, and we were one of the absolute lowest adult meal prices in the whole Kansas City metro area. So it's appropriate that we, obviously, for compliance reasons, to do it anyway.
All right. At this time, the chair is seeking a motion.
I so move. I so move, madam.
I so second.
It's been moved in second for the approval of the adult meal prices for the nineteen, two thousand nineteen, twenty school year. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those not? Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we're moving on to Mr. Weekly, discussion of school boundaries overview update for us, please.
Well, as we discussed on Tuesday, or Tuesday evening at the Finance Facilities Combined Meeting, school boundaries were adjusted right after the March seventh, Shaping Our Future vote. We went back to MGT to ask them to redo the boundaries with the two schools that we were closed, because those were not part of the options that they had presented to the Board. They did that within about a two to three time period, and we were then posted those on our websites, I think around mid-April. Been on the websites, an interactive piece where you can really almost drill down to the exact street level to where you need to go. We also had those, obviously, that was part of the process in doing bus routes and and attendance for schools. We ran the bus, the attendance for on Tuesday, I shared that with the Finance and Facilities Committee. We are under our enrollment from last year as far as every school, every school within the district, so we're under that enrollment presently, that we were at actually last year within those same schools. So we are very good as far as if, as far as being not, not too full. So we're right where we need to be, and as, and that we, as Mr., or as Dr. Skinner said earlier, as we continue to grow, we've got plenty of room to grow within the buildings that we currently have. So I think the boundary issue was, or the boundary changes were very efficient. And I know they're different, but obviously, when you close those schools like that, you've got to move some pieces around, so.
I would just like to add, Mr. Weekly, that we continue to monitor that for the next thirty days.
Sure.
Just to ensure, you know, you know, the strengths and opportunities of these boundary changes. I'll just assess that. That'd be great if you can bring back something at some point.
Yeah, I'll coincide that with maybe with Dr. Skinner's attendance piece to make that as how those particular schools are growing, and specifically so we know the boundaries were appropriate for each one of those schools. So I'll share that with Dr. Skinner as we, as he shares that attendance report every month.
Is there any mechanism in place that to address any concerns that maybe parents may have about the boundary changes?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I know Dr. Skinner's filled a lot of phone calls regarding that about attending certain schools. He could probably speak more clearly to that than I am. I did not get too, I don't get too many of those phone calls. I get some related to transportation, obviously, about moving, moving stops and those kinds of things in relationship to catching a bus maybe in a different place than I did before because I changed schools. So certainly, we've, we've filled it some of those, I have filled it some of those phone calls. Apple has been great to work with in that respect. They understand that there's some different changes with that, and obviously, adding kids and deleting kids as the process goes along, you know, stops change. I heard a great comment from Kansas City Superintendent after their first day. He said, stops will change frequently in the next three to four weeks, and he's exactly right, according to kids that are coming and going, and so you're going to have that. It's a natural process at the beginning of school, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I got one.
Oh, you do? Okay.
I guess my selection of the boundaries, I know that you guys had stated that you went back to MGT, and that was some of the things that I didn't think at that time, you know, I I felt that the Board could have been more engaged in it, because just looking at especially the Ingalls Boundary, there was, there's some kids that's just two blocks that were away from there, and I don't even think they were in that, to whereas they should have been shipped over to Warford. And so I I don't know how you guys or MGT looked at that, but they weren't even in the radar, but they were still told to go over to Warford when it was like literally two blocks. but they were still told to go over to Warford when it was like literally two blocks from Ingalls, literally. So I don't know.
That's a, to be honest with you, Mr. Reagan, that's pretty typical in a lot of school districts where you have boundaries like that, and boundaries, boundary lines are ones that are confusing for families where I'm literally, I cross the street or, you know, go two blocks and I'm at a different school, but yet I'm going, you know, so far away. Some of that is just pure numbers, balancing the schools and what their capacity and what they can take. And, and be honest with you, it's also about how long am I on the bus? And so that kind plays in a factor too, how many kids are on the bus for a certain time period as well. So I know it seems, you know, those same kids are also one block or two blocks from Grandview Schools, so, you know, the same thing could apply, so. But it is, it is a pretty typical argument in a lot of school districts where that, that occurs.
Thank you. At this time, we're moving to item 10.2, district credit card use for board travel. Okay, so I guess I'll just go ahead and start this discussion. I think that this is more than appropriate. I've spoken to the attorneys and board members about this, this type of item here, this is not something that I think we should be working out today during our board meeting, but it's more appropriate to move to finance. Finance.
Who?
Who put it on here?
My question, my question was it, I tried to address board travel expenses. This credit card thing is not my.
Yeah, so it's not yours, so.
Well, I'll speak to it.
Okay, speak briefly to it.
I'm gonna speak real briefly to it. I guess what has been going on is that if you look at our policies, I never knew, first of all, who all had our district credit cards in the first place. Second thing is, when we do go on these trips and things, we've had some unpleasant things. So to add, the question is, is that to keep and alleviate things, maybe if the board president or who is the chair could say, hey, look, I need some type of credit card when we're out and about. Yes, it has been sent out to the board. It has also been checked through our auditors, and it also has been checked through our attorneys. So that was the reasoning. I'm not going to go into too many details, but if you want to do it to finance, we can however you guys want to do it.
Madam President, I have a question.
Yes, please.
What is the, what is the credit card going to be used for?
Yeah, the, a credit card, you know, usually when you go to your MSB, let's use your MSBA travel, for example. When you book your hotel, you have to either put your own credit card up to hold your incidentals, sometimes up to $200, plus you need to use your own credit card, personal credit card to pay for your meals, and you, if you're driving, you have to use your own credit card to pay for your gas, so that's just one example. I think it's.
I know specifically when it comes to the example, but like my question is, like, when it comes to any upcoming trip, what is it going to be used for?
Well, credit cards have to be used to reserve rooms, flights, and reservations, just like in typical business travel. I mean, your own, your own personal or the district business credit card should be used.
So then the question was, if we have not used the credit card for previous, if we've not physically had the credit card to go on trips before this, say, for instance, example, I know that board members went to Las Vegas last year. My question to those board members, if they're still here, did you take a credit card with you?
No, there was, there is no credit card. It really needs to be discussed if that's something that the board decides to want to do, probably in the finance. We had to use our own personal funds.
To, to.
To, to put incidentals on your, your $200 deposit on your room, also for your food, your meals, you have to use your own credit card for that stuff.
So then my question is.
Here's the question, let me help you answer.
The superintendent said something, I wanted to hear what she said.
We use our own personal cards as staff, so we're reimbursed for items.
Okay, so at what point is that not okay?
Well, that's why I said I think it's just important to honor a conversation through a finance committee if that's, you know, I didn't put this on here, I think this is something that we can discuss.
And I agree.
Over and over and over again.
Oh, and my, to be, I'll be short. My only concern with board members going, taking the district credit card with them on trips is, I will reference the incident that happened nearby district with Ray Towns' board, board member which, who he used the card for various reasons. Now, I understand the reasons in which have been stated here, but I also know that there is also within the board policy for travel expenses. It also states that district prohibits any expense that is unauthorized, excessive, or unnecessary as determined by the superintendent or the designated. Unauthorized expenses include but are not limited to costs of association for travel with spouse, children, if you bring somebody with you, care for a dependent, if you have to, during the course of travel, alcoholic beverages, snacks in addition to regular meals, personal expenses, including personal, personal communication expenses or laundry, entertainment, unless the entertainment expense is, is part of the registration for the event, expenses for travel extending beyond time required, expenses incurred by non-employees traveling with board members. The reason why I'm bringing this up is because why would, my question, we can talk about it in finance, and maybe this question is to be saved for that conversation, but why would we put ourselves in a position where we could possibly make a mistake?
Well, you know, one of the things I'm going to speak briefly to is really a comment. What insults me as a professional working woman is when you know what is reasonable and what's not reasonable. I've had a business credit card at my place of employment for over 17 years, and the policy, the procurement policy should always be reviewed prior to accepting and sign off on those, on any of those types of items. It warrants a discussion in a small group setting to see if that is a direction that the board will want to go in the future. If that is not the desire of the board during that time, this item is very appropriate in respect to, or we still have guests in here that have, to present, to move to finance and kind of just flush it out a little bit.
I mean, I'm just, the only reason why I'm bringing it up is because this isn't my, I didn't put this on the agenda, but I'm just, I'm just stating a comment.
Okay.
Could I say one thing before we go to the next item? I think it's unfair for us to compare ourselves to a different district and things that happen in a different district. We are not that district. So what happened with another district, you can't say, oh, we're going to use it for different things or all the wrong reasons. We cannot compare ourselves to any other district, and if it's something that has to do with training, I agree, why not? But in the same essence, in corporate America, when you have corporate jobs, they issue out business credit cards all the time to handle business, and you don't have to use your personal credit card. So I have seen it, and if you worked in a corporate office, those things are provided, so I don't see anything wrong with having that on the board, and I just don't feel that it's right to compare us to another district because everyone is not the same.
My last comment, my last comment, and I'm done. We're not a corporate. Corporates are, corporations are for-profit, we are nonprofit. These are taxpayer dollars. So my concern is about the community that we serve, the money that we have, and ensuring that we are not using taxpayer dollars in jeopardizing. And what I mean by jeopardizing, not saying that it will or will not happen, why would we put ourselves in a situation where the possibility of jeopardizing taxpayer funds is possible?
Isn't that, again, that comes in just assuming, you are assuming something that you don't have facts about.
Those are not assumptions, those are facts.
Yes, and you cannot assume anything, Mr. Watry, so therefore, let's just move on to the next item. Thank you.
I got that, I got that to me. That was a good one, though.
I don't know whether you want to send it to the finance committee.
I think, I think, that was a good, that was a good one, so. I think that it's disappropriate, it warrants an honor, people's concerns and questions and requests to move this at some point to the finance committee to continue to flush out if this is the desire of the board. I don't think it's disappropriate at this time to try to work that out logistically. All right, so moving on to our guests, we have some guests, LJ Hart and Company. Okay, if you can come join us and give us a brief presentation of who you are and why you're here. Thank you. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Dr. Wesley Townsend is the vice president with our company. I'm Larry Hart of LJ Hart and Company, the CEO. He's distributing some booklets, and we will briefly go through those. We appreciate the opportunity to visit with you. I'll wait till he gets those to you.
Appreciate it.
We're, we're interested in becoming the municipal bond underwriter for the Hickman Mills School District, and we're delighted to have the opportunity to present our qualifications and maybe answer questions that you might have. This blue booklet is my introductory one, and I'll, I'll just briefly go through that. And I'm, as I stated at the beginning, I welcome questions that you have or comments, and will be eager to, to respond. The, the corporate mission statement is unchanged since I formed the company in 1991 with one other person. We've grown to a staff of 15 to 18 people depending on, in the summertime, we have interns and they go back to college, so our roles go down from that. On the next page is a map of all the Missouri school districts. Those are listed in, colored in yellow, the ones that are clients of our firm, and so you remember that that's, that represents that, that 27-year history of the company. My point with that is that I feel like we must be doing something right because we have been widely accepted by the schools, it's over 60% of them. The nearest one that's a reference, close reference is Grandview C4. We've been working with Grandview since 1996, and we've done 36 financings there, a total of 151 million, slightly more than that. We've done, of that 151 million, 17 of them have been refinancings or zero interest qualified zone academy bonds or qualified school construction bonds. The total savings in interest from all of that is about $16 million. So that savings has helped them do a larger number of no tax increase proposals. Then we have the summary of our professional services that are listed. This is very broad and extensive. We, we aren't, we are not just a bonding company, we're not, we're not, we're seldom hired by any client to be their, just their municipal bond underwriter, and that's it. They usually like our service with calculating, helping them calculate their debt service levy, their operating fund levies, and those types of things. And with the large increase in valuation that Hickman Mills is looking at and the rollback that would go with that, there's a considerable amount of initial work that needs to be done to have you ready for your September tax rate hearing. And that's, that's a service we provide. I would call your attention to page, the, the services are specifically listed. We have a general obligation bonding plan that's, that's mentioned there. Then we have on pages 10 and 11, the, if you take all of the public education issues that have been completed in Missouri since in 2018, we were, you can see by the pie chart, we had the largest amount there, 58 of the 100, and then from 2013 through 2018, we had 525 of the 952 or 55.41%. That's on volume, not on par value, number of issues. We don't have a minimum size. I've listed on pages 12 and 13 our references of school, school administrators throughout the state. Dr. Rodriguez is mentioned in, as the superintendent of the Grandview District. Then we have our individual resumes. Tom Posarkowicz is the president of the firm. He's a CPA, he's been with us 13 years. Courtney Wegman is a CPA and vice president, and then you'll notice we have our retired superintendent, Dr. Bruce Johnson. He was a former president of MASA, he's been with us six years. Dr. Wesley Townsend is in his second year. Dr. Jeff Lindsay from southeast Missouri is up there. And then we have other, other folks in here with their resumes, I won't go into the details, but, but those retired superintendents are very helpful to new superintendents for budgeting. We, we have to be consistent with, with compliance with the municipal bond advisor rule, but, but we have the process set up with the, with the lawyers that we work with that, that ensure that that happens. But we have in here our election results and completed financings by year, and it's grand total almost $6 billion in that period of time. That's a quick view of our firm. I think our main, main reason why we're retained is that we provide ongoing service without charging, and, and that has proven to be very beneficial. Some schools, such as Grandview, they've, they've been able to take an initial levy, and through the years by refunding and other things, been able to build many buildings without having to raise taxes. So that's the overall introduction to the company. I have a few specifics to pass on, which is in the other booklet. Yes, ma'am?
I did have a comment, the superintendent just pointed something out to me from the letter, it says July 16th, that we had a letter of intent, did you mean August the 16th? You have it on your paperwork.
I'm not sure. It, it, it could have been that we didn't get that sent till August. We were, we were hoping for this opportunity, so I think I prepared the letter in July initially. We didn't, it hasn't been.
It says July 16th.
Yes, but it wasn't, it's, it probably should be, that's when I prepared it, the, the signature date is, is different by, by yourself. It's, it's different. The, the date you signed it is, is later than July 16th.
Yeah, okay. I just want to say for record that I didn't see this letter on July 16th, 17th, 18th, 19th, August 1st, or.
Okay.
Or ever had a conversation with your.
Yeah, and I'm glad you're bringing that up because that takes me to the next point, is that our, what we will talk about next is based on the signature of the board president on our non-binding letter of intent, and what we talk about from this point on, her signing the letter gives my company the chance to present to you without you considering it advice. It's the retention of us as your municipal bond underwriter would be up to the Board of Education, but at least what I discussed briefly this evening, it's still going to be more general, but we have a couple of specific items that I think you'll be interested in hearing about, but it's, it's not advice, it's the intent that we would be your underwriter. Thanks for the clarification. And now I'm going to go to the gold booklet. As I mentioned earlier, you've had a significant increase in assessed valuation. The figure we have is 501 million. 501 million, 800,012, which is an increase of 100 million, 900. hundred and two thousand, three thirty-nine from last year. It's a twenty-five percent increase. And Dr. Johnson and Dr. Townsend have calculated what that means preliminarily on your rollback in the operating fund due to the Hancock Amendment. And it's about a dollar and eight cents. But we don't say that's the final figure. We have to work more closely with your administrators to be sure we have all of the data down correctly. But that's the initial, which is a significant drop, a twenty-five percent drop in your operating levy. So that would be one of our first jobs would be to come in and work closely to determine what that service levy will be. And we have some information on that here, but also the operating fund levy. And from what I'm understanding, by the end of September, it's unlikely that Jackson County is going to give you final numbers that have been through the appeals process and all that. So, but right now, given no changes, it looks like you'd be a hundred million more than you were a year ago and you'd have these things to consider. So what I'm going to explain beyond that is some theory on actions you can take to put yourself in a better position because of these facts with the sudden growth from reassessment. And if you'll turn in the booklets to the yellow, the gold booklet, to page one, that calculates your growth in assessed valuation. For the last five years, it's been ten point one eight percent. For the last twenty-one years, though, you've only averaged one point five seven percent per year. And prior to reassessment, it was just point eight nine. We're only using growth rates of projected in the future of one percent, trying to be conservative. If you turn to page two, you'll see what your levy is for 2019, 20, assuming you do the dollar eight rollback in Fund One and you keep your debt service levy at the dollar ten. Now, with the Grandview District, they are prepaying some bonds. Their debt service levy will be adjusted upward. They haven't arrived at the final number yet. Those would be some things we would suggest as possibilities to you because with this new valuation, your no-tax increase bonding capacity is about thirty million dollars. If you adjust the levy to a dollar twenty-seven, it becomes forty million, which is nearly all of your forty-two million of legal authority that you have. Again, this is assuming that it would be done at the April seventh, 2020 election. We don't know at the moment what building plans you have, but we thought you would like to know how much you could do under the new scenario. So the increase in valuation is working to your benefit as far as no-tax increase bond issues are. Now, if you turn to page, page number nine, here's a preliminary calculation of what your Form C debt service levy would be based on the new assessed valuation and what we've have down for your fund balance as of June thirty, 2019. And you'll notice if you go to line ten, your levy would have to be reduced to a dollar four from the state auditor. Now, what we would suggest is that you consider prepaying one million, two hundred thousand dollars of your 2011 bonds on March one, 2021. If you do that, that will change the calculation on line four so that your levy could go, and I'll turn to that page to save you time. If you go to page eleven, that would allow a dollar twenty-seven levy, so you could easily keep the dollar ten that you have. And thirty million would be possible with that. Another seventeen cent adjustment, which I'm sure your rollback is going to be more than seventeen cents in Fund One if we're starting with a possible dollar eight. I'm not sure it'll be the full dollar eight, but it probably will be at least seventeen cents. So there's an opportunity to move pennies that you have to roll back in Fund One, move those pennies to the debt service to increase your ability to borrow more money without raising taxes. And you would still be rolling back a considerable amount of, so what, this presentation is just to give you a peek at how we would work with you to try and solve some of these issues. But we're giving you some initial data that is based on our research at this point. So we're eager to help you. We think we can work on your, with our retired superintendents, can work closely with the Superintendent and Finance Officer on budgetary matters and get our arms around collectively with your tax situation before you have to file at the end of September with the county.
Okay. Thank you. This is a lot of information to take in and I think that, I really want to thank you for your time and this information. And I think our next step will be just to have a discussion amongst the Board and the Superintendent to see what our next steps were going to be.
Ma'am President, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Could you give us, if you can, a timeline, where we would be? How much time have we got to make some decisions to move to where, look forward to the April seventh election?
It will be tight from where you are, but I'm sure, you may not find that you want to go to the full amount that you can, but you might already have some projects identified that are known to your constituents that they would be supportive of. And our goal would be to work with you first to establish those levies, identify some of those projects. That would be done between now and the end of September. Then you would have October through December to get community members involved as you sort through what projects are popular and/or needed. And you could, we would help with those steering committee meetings. We've done that in many cases. And then from that would grow out the bond issue. The filing deadline, Mr. Brooks, is January twenty-eighth. So we would have to have a ballot ready by January, but it would give you three months or so to determine what the public would support, what you as board members and administrators and staff think are the highest priorities. Then those could be put into a sample ballot. And we could, we would encourage you to perhaps make a DVD that could be on your website that would be informational, not promotional because then it's, if you have a steering committee that will pay for it, then it could be promotional, assuming that you just want it to be informational, that could be done. And we can work with your staff and others to develop things like that. That's typically what we have done. But did I answer your question on the timeline?
Yes, I have two other questions.
Yes, sir.
Do you recommend a citizens group that also includes staff and board members?
Yes, definitely. I would, I'd like to see citizens groups that have board participation, administrators, teachers and parents. Those are good. Sometimes even students, some of the high school students are good to be somewhat involved if you feel good about that.
My last question is, we are not prohibited from seeking funds to put on a, let me ask the question as I make the statement. Are we prohibited from seeking funds from certain parts to do a campaign, to a media campaign?
Once you appoint a steering committee, they would elect a president or chairman and then a treasurer, and that committee could seek those funds as well as board members and administrators could call people, encouraging them to contribute. It'd be best to not do it on school time, but that would, however you can raise the money legally, that would be okay. There are reports that need to be filed with the Ethics Commission that we're familiar with, that we would assist you in doing that. But you do have time, but I would, if you, I would go be ready to appoint a committee ideally to get organized in October and retain an architect for, if you don't already have one on board, to give you some reasonable cost estimates so that as we move through that next three months, you've got a fairly good idea what the costs are going to be for what you want to do. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your questions and for your attention. Greatly appreciate it.
Okay. So we are moving on to Education Accountability Committee reports.
Sorry about that. So the Education Accountability?
Oh, there it is, right there. It's little. Okay. It's written on a small little, ten point four is that at. Or director visits to schools.
I believe I brought this, attention to this, what's open for us to discuss. There has been, for the, from what I understand, for the last year, great debate over how board directors are operating in buildings, in a sense of not announcing themselves when they come. And I think, here, let me start over. I don't know how many people in here are savvy of, I'm pretty sure some of you probably were history teachers or some of you read comic books, but my, I'm an enthusiast, so I'm going to use this reference. The poet, the Roman poet, yeah, the Roman poet, a Roman poet once said, "Who watches the watchman?" And what I'm addressing here is the fact that as we are a governing body, we have policies that are in place that we ask that our, the district employees as well as administration follow to. We hold them accountable to that. As a governing body, we also need to ensure that we self-govern. So if we have policies in place, we need to follow those policies. Currently, there are two policies regarding district visits that encompasses not just board directors, but also parents and employees and other visitors. Why I'm bringing attention to this is to ensure that we know what those policies are. I've provided policies in the packets at each director's table. I'm going to leave it open to discussion for anyone else who wants to discuss their actions regarding this policy.
Sure, Tramis.
I wanted to just briefly bring up the situation about board policy. Now, I have a question. My suggestion, I think we should review that policy about, we have to give a notice before going to school. And I want to bring the suggestion, if we can rewrite that policy and change that policy. My own personal opinion, I, as a parent, I don't believe, you know, it's hard to go into a school and you have to give notice when you're not there to talk about anything on the board. It's relating to your child. And your best interest is to go into that school and focus on your child only. And I did it in a meeting, MSBA meeting, and from what I gather, is as a parent, you stick to your parent role. Anything that's on the board, you don't relate to anything that has to deal with you being a parent when you enter that school building. So from my understanding, I shouldn't have to give no, you shouldn't have to call if you're going there about your child. Stick to the role. Your child, you're a board member and you're a parent. You have to learn the boundaries.
Now, to make a comment on that, during our board retreat, there was a, this was a discussion and it wasn't really followed up with, but I believe the reference, again, another comic book reference, you can't go into the buildings saying you're Bruce Wayne while wearing a Batman costume. Because right here, parents, guardians and patrons of the district are welcome to visit schools and attend district events. However, all visitors during business hours, including board members, must sign in at the building office or at the principal's office and receive a district-issued visitor's badge prior to proceeding elsewhere in the building. So that even as a parent, that still applies to you, that you check in at the front desk. You can't just roam into the school. Half of the issues that we've discussed when it comes to the security of our schools has been based on the fact that we have parents who are actively coming into the schools and fighting. So again, with this board policy, this board policy is broken into two parts, whereas KK, which is the general aspect of the board policy, states that the board and administration will not tolerate anyone who presents, who presents, whose presence disturbs classes or district activities or hinders the instructional process. Now, as board members, I want to ensure that, as board members and as parents, yeah, that we are not, that our presence does not interfere with instruction and curriculum of our kids. Now, KKR1 states, "No visits shall be conducted in such a way as to detract from classroom activities. Any board members who wish to visit a district site should directly contact a building official or building secretary. In the event of a conflict, the board member and the school official will schedule the visit for a mutually convenient time. If a board member is congruently a parent of a student in the district, in the business..."
Hold on. I just want to, just a quick second here.
Hold on, let me finish that.
I know, I know. I know, I understand you're reading, but I think
Let me just finish it.
We already have, we have copies in front of us, I think.
You have copies. They do not.
I understand, so what I'm going to, pardon me.
Wait a minute. I'm, point of order.
No, point of order is this.
Point of order.
You're reading a whole dissertation to the audience.
I'm not reading a dissertation. I'm reading a highlighted section.
Okay, well, finish your, finish your reading.
Thank you. Let me go ahead and finish.
Finish your reading, sir.
If a board member is congruently a parent of a student in the district and visits a district site for reasons unrelated to the business of the board, the regular rules of visitation apply. In other words, you don't, pursuant to policy KK, additionally, it's important to note that this policy is inadequate in regards to scheduled building activities open to the public. Board members are invited and encouraged to attend these events without notice. These are events and not during business hours. As board members, if we are interrupting instruction and curriculum within the schools by sitting here and dropping in, then we are in direct violation of our own policy. So until that policy is reviewed or recommended, that's the policy.
So I'm going to go ahead and make my comment now. Mr. Reagan, Watry is the policy in the CREP. And it sounds like, based on what I hear from his side and grunting and moaning and reading a policy, that this policy may also need to be revisited and discussed amongst board members. So with that being said, I'm going to, at this time, appoint an AHAOC Policy Review Committee. Cecil Watry will chair that if he is interested in chairing that committee. Cecil?
Absolutely.
For policy to review as policy comes up, up and coming policies that need to be edited based on the future and current need of this district. I will serve on that policy and then go ahead. And Tramis has also shown her interest in policy review process. So with that being said, I think today we've discussed board visitation policy, travel policy. I think Clifford had one of discipline policy. So if there's no objection that we, do you have another one, Watry, you want to discuss?
I have a quick comment when you finish.
Oh, she has a comment.
Okay.
I just wanted to say, especially for the new board members, when I was Board President, we did have a policy. And that policy stated that before we visited a school, we would contact the board secretary or the administrator. And that just has to do with respecting someone's time. When new board members come, they don't know all these things. I too I too agree with Mr. Watry. I don't, I don't think it's fair to go into schools. Administrators, they want to accommodate, they, they want to accommodate board members. But sometimes they are busy either evaluating other teachers or just either with parents or doing a lot of things. So I think it's important that we respect that. And, and we're board members, we're, we are servants. We, we are not privileged. We are not, I'm the board director and I have to come in here and you have to see me. I think that we have to look at that mindset. But we did have a policy, but our new people might not be familiar with that. But that's what we did. You know, we just let, we let, either let the superintendent know or the board secretary or the administrator. Because sometimes it really is not the appropriate time. If you're a parent, you can go up to your child's school. No one can stop you in that respect. But when you are a board member, you know, that's a, a different hat as well. So going in as a parent, we do have parents. I had a grandson who was at Ruskin. I didn't just go up there because he was my grandson. But I just think it's just a matter of, we need to respect their time and just do it decent and in order. That's all I wanted to say. This is really to the new board members that maybe didn't, weren't even aware that we had this policy. And we did enforce it at, three years ago. Thank you.
And I think this is, this is more than appropriate time that after speaking with Legal today, Legal said that it's very common that boards of education review policy probably quarterly just relevant to the needs of the district. So this is a good, and it's a be a refresher for those of us that don't read in great detail, even though we're policymakers and holders. So with that being said, I think that I covered those three. I covered those, I want to make sure I had those three things that's moving to the policy committee.
So we are discussing travel?
Travel. We're travel, discussing travel. And we're, we're discussing
Credit card, the credit card situation?
Credit card.
Um, I, I did have only, I just have a question for legal counsel while, while we're on the topic.
I just want to make sure I get the agendas right first.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Go ahead.
Okay. Travel, discipline, board visitation policy. I think that goes with travel. Yeah, that goes with travel. Legal, I think Cecil has a question for you.
So, and I think I, I missed this. I missed asking this question because I, I believe that when it came to the credit card situation you referred, like they, certain board members have addressed you with the question. But I ju, I wanted to ask you a question regarding the, a part of the, the travel. It states in the travel expenses that board members who attend the National School Board Association Conference at district's expense during a school, during a year in which the member's seat is up for reelection must sign an agreement to reimburse the district for cost of airfare, hotel and conference registration in the event that the member does not win a reelection. This agreement must be signed prior to the district's registering the member for the conference or making other reservations. Now, the question is, is that if, if, if someone doesn't sign this form, what would you, what would you advise them to do?
Use the mic, he said, Mr. Fields. He said, Mr. Brooks, use the mic. He says, he wants you to use the mic.
That's a question, that's a question that we will have to take a look at. I think what you, the interests that you have to balance there are, one, as long as a board member is a board member, they have a responsibility to discharge whatever their duties are. And if that particular trip or, or, or cost is a part of that, that has to be weighed against, of course, the district's right, I guess, to be reimbursed for, if it's like a, a training that's not going to be used in the future. I think we'd have to balance those interests. As far as I, that's, those are the competing interests that I have. But I, I don't think that I can answer your question now without looking at that further.
Okay.
Okay. And so I think that it's important to, that's a good question, Mr. Watry. Because actually, the board policy also reads that the following rules will apply to district employees unless superintendents and designs need to determine unusual circumstances justifiable and exception. Board members will follow the policies as well unless the Board of Education board president determines that unusual circumstance justifies an exception to the question that you raised, Watry. So it will be, I'm glad that this conversation is coming up because I don't know when that policy or where that, is that a state statute? Or is that just a?
No, that's, that's, so I, so I
I'm, I'm, I'm asking, I'm, I'm, remember, I'm asking a question, I'm asking the attorneys.
I didn't know, you didn't direct the question to them.
Yeah, I'm directing it to the, the attorneys.
Because I have your answer. Go ahead. Because she doesn't.
Okay.
I'm sorry, ask, ask a question again.
I'm asking the question that while you guys are balancing the processes, if board members, because the part of our board policy states, as you can tell, this board member needs a lot of professional development in order to move and propel this district forward. As a governing body, we should have a commitment to be better equipped to do our jobs in the best interest of children. That's, that's the first paragraph. So Legal, Legal, what I want, what I aspire is that we really take a critical look at this and make sure that we're ensuring the transparency of all documents, that all documents are updated and that all documents meet the current and future needs of this district. It just has to be done. It's relevant enough, it's important enough, and it warrants the attention of Legal and a policy setting committee that, that we just created here.
Was that a question?
I think Mr. Brooks had something.
I was just going to suggest that we, that we cut off the debate and refer it to a committee and because we don't have all the answers, although the policy, that, that policy is written, I think, in 2014, whether it's applicable in 2019, but I, I don't want, I don't want to make the suggestion and start debating myself. But I think it ought to be referred to the committee and the debate ought, ought to go to discontinue.
I, I concur with you, Director Brooks. I'm only stating the fact that the, I agree with, I agree with both the vice presi, uh, I agree with both the president as well as Director Brooks in the sense that upon following up with the MSBA, they stated this, this policy was too general. And that we need to find, we need to be able to find, I guess, be able to define it more, more robustly.
If they're governed by, if the policies are governed by a state statute, the statutory reference is at the bottom of the policy.
Right.
There's no statutory reference to this. I did some research on it. I'm not aware of any statutory reference to this particular policy.
And so it's cool that she doesn't have this policy.
Right. Thank you. And so just in, in respect to everyone's time, it has been moved to the ad hoc policy committee and with the attorneys, for further review and edits to the three posi, policies that I've stated four times. So at this point, we are going to move on to, they're happy.
Present.
He's trying to get your attention.
Oh, oh, well, yes, Mr. Reagan.
I didn't want to be rude.
Yeah. Well, I'm trying to find my agenda.
I guess the overhanging of this is, is this, this visitation. I think that's the only overhanging one. Because now I guess everybody wants to know the visitation of the policy. Now I guess he wants to, what is he trying to do with that now? You're going to send it to the committee, right?
For all
All of them. Okay, so what are we going to do in there?
Just going to the committee.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah, that's all going to the committee with assistance of legal counsel.
And, and the council.
Yes.
All right.
Okay.
I'll make sure.
So we had the education accountability. Did you have something that we're, are we going?
Uh, yes, ma'am, just a, madam president, just a quick update. So we did meet on August 5th. We discussed code of conduct and behavioral intervention task force being created to kind of revamp those documents. The purpose of that was to better support our students, administration, teachers and parents by providing a more concise framework for discipline and climate, also individualized interventions. So that's kind of what we're focusing on now, really guiding that culture piece through the discipline and behavior interventions.
Okay. Thank you. You guys are doing great work over there. Facilities committee, is there any updates or from your committee?
No, we're just going to meet on August the 22nd at 5 o'clock. And we're going to also be meeting at September 11th, September the 12th at 5 o'clock. It was admitted, it wasn't on there.
I had a question about the August 22nd meeting. If we met this week on the 12th, is there a need to meet 10 days later for the August 22nd meeting?
Yes, ma'am. We have some unfinished things that we had to discuss on there that we haven't had a chance to even talk about. The reasoning for both of these facility meetings is because I didn't want to leave out the financial piece of it. And that's when I had select, told my committee that we need to bring in both of them. But that wasn't just to cut off mine. That was just to have it so that therefore they could hear the financial pieces to it.
Right. And so we agreed in our training that we would meet once per month unless there was an emergency. So, so are those items an emergency for the 22nd, like 10 days later after we just met? Or can they all wait to September?
I'm going to do mine on the 26th, 2nd.
And not meet in September?
I mean, on September 11th. I'm keeping the, I'm keeping the one I had.
I just asked that we respect the work of the superintendent and the administration, especially at the beginning of the school.
At this time of the school year.
At the beginning of the school year and, and be very reasonable. So we're going to move on to the finance committee reports. Mr. Brooks?
You've, you've heard our report in, in terms of those that were on consent docket today, and we have no further report.
The, the one thing that we do need to bring to the board is the committee's recommendation for what we're going to, to work with counsel, legal counsel, to conduct the public sale of the following buildings. Old Smith Hill, Johnson and Simonton Elementary. Or in the alternative, engage a broker to assist with the sales of the three buildings. And so what that means, if Legal can interpret that, because we had Block come, it allowed, it forged aboard the, the flexibility to work with community partners and/or a broker if necessary when surplusing, dissolving our buildings.
Can we, can we have that in time for our September 10th meeting? I'm sorry, can we have that in time for our September 10th meeting? Had you planned, Madam Chair, for that to come through the finance committee?
Have what come to the finance committee? I'm sorry.
But she just, you mentioned about the, the, the sales of the building?
Yeah, which ones we're going to do, how we're going to handle each and every one of them. What, the attorneys can go ahead and elaborate on the action that was taken.
My, my question was, would you, would you want this on the agenda for the finance committee on September the 20th? September 10th.
May I ask a question? Like, so we, we, we just had that.
We just had this.
And the, we made a
We haven't dealt with the, we haven't dealt with whether or not we're going to utilize the person who made the presentation.
Oh, no.
No, we never, we never amended for the, what was it?
Hold on, one second. What the, what the motion, yeah.
I was drawing my question.
I, I understand your question. This motion was just to give the board the authority to be able to do one or the other, to either engage a broker, whether it be the broker that you saw today or any broker, or conduct a public sale on the buildings. And so this motion gives you the alternative to do either or. And if at some point in time, the finance committee wants to take up the specifics of what broker you select, then you can do that at the future meeting.
That was, that was my question. But if it, if the chair wishes to go in another direction, it's fine with me. But I was, since we have not made a decision which one of those we're going to do, we can bypass the finance committee and go directly to the board. Doesn't make any difference to me.
Right. That's what I mean. We can go directly to the board now and, and get the board's lesson to move forward with this recommendation.
Correct. The recommendation to either sell them publicly or hire a broker.
Right. And so I'll go, I'll state this recommendation. Every board member has been provided a policy, the board policy, and then also the broker provided a policy. At this time, the chair is seeking a motion based upon the options available to us to work with the assistance of our legal counsel to conduct a public sale of the following buildings. Old Smith Hill, Johnson and Simonton Elementary. Or in the alternative, engage a broker to assist with any of the three buildings.
You stated the motion, Madam President. Okay, I'll second.
Okay. Any, any discussion?
Madam President, wouldn't it be better if somebody else made the motion and then? No, but wouldn't it be better if someone made the motion other than you?
All right. So she got to withdraw her questioning and all that, right? Does she have to withdraw all that?
I withdraw my recommendation so someone else can make the motion.
I'd still move, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Let's take, all in favor?
Aye.
Those not? Thank you.
All right. Where are you starting? All right. All right, I, based on these options that was available to us, I move that with the assistance of legal counsels, with the conduct of public sale of the following buildings. Old Smith Hill, Johnson Elementary and Simonton Elementary. Or in the alterma, alternative, engage a broker to assist with the sale of the three buildings that I just mentioned above. Is that correct?
Yes.
Legal counsel? That's the motion.
Yeah, part of information. Didn't we just vote on it?
No, she withdrew hers because he wanted her, me to do it, and then we, I thought we voted on that. Because he wanted us to withdraw. Now, which one?
I withdrew.
She withdrew.
I made the motion.
He made the motion. Because after she withdrew, he, he made the motion, Reagan seconded it, and we voted on it. Yeah, she, so we're, we're, we're done with it.
Yeah, so we need to vote.
We voted. We voted.
Can we start doing this?
Yeah.
He said he wanted to draw it, so hey.
You know, I think at some point, that's why I'm going to go get some additional training. Period and point blank. And parliamentary training, I'm going to remind the board, is August 26th, and it will be facilitated by Fields and Brown for cost-saving measures. We have informational items and future agenda items right here. Education accountability, looks like you guys want to discuss code of conduct and the task force update. Education committee, looks like you want to discuss the RTI in your committees. Education accountability, the beginning of school update, if you want one of those. Education accountability, a certified and classified classroom support. That's what you guys want to do. And so these items, if there's no opposition, will move to the Education Accountability Committee for additional work and review. All in favor? Aye. Those not? Looks like the motion carries six to zero. Finance committee agenda, update on bond timeline, bond council, selection of bond, whoever we're going to work with on that. Finance committee, update on vacant properties, just to keep an eye on those vacant properties and what we're going to do and as we move forward with each one of those items. Finance committee, the need for a potential community advisory council. Finance committing, continue to have an assessment update regarding the property assessments. I mean, that's going to be ongoing. Finance committee, continue to watch the, the fund balances and explore any additional cost savings. Finance committing, action to develop a district-wide MBE and WBE policy to start that discussion. So we probably work hand in hand with the policy committee to do that. So we probably work hand in hand with, uh, the policy committee to do that. If there's no opposition in moving these items forward to committee, uh, the chair will like, uh, a recommendation to move these forward. All in favor?
So I gotta make the motion?
Motion.
I think we, I think we, you voted on some a moment ago, and I don't think a motion was made.
That, that's why it gets late. Okay.
I, I'll move that we do what you said, but the previous one that you did was no motion made, you just asked for a vote. I just, I think for the record, the secretary, it ought to be.
Okay, for the record.
Okay. I'll, I'll make a motion on the one you just presented, but I think we need to back up and make a motion on the one that we passed, where a motion wasn't made.
All right, thanks, Brooks.
Okay.
Okay. Let's give, uh, let's have a motion, please, to accept these, the finance committee agenda items.
I'll still move.
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I don't see anything for facilities.
I said it, I can.
Okay, so, at this time, we're going to, um, eh, I'm seeking a motion, a clear motion for the items on the education accountability committee. To accept those, a clear motion needs to be taken. Okay?
I'll, I'll move that one also.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept all these items to, to move to education accountability committee. Okay. So. All in favor?
Aye.
Those not? Okay, thank you. The motion carries six to zero. Informational items, I don't know, we already talked about, um, the discipline climate in schools. Is there anything we need to add to that? Board travel has already been moved to, uh, policy committee. What's the, the next facilities meeting, so it looks like it's August 22nd, 2019 at 5:00. Parliamentary training, August 26th at 5:00. Education co- accountability committee meeting, September 9th. Finance committee meeting, September 10th. Levy hearing, September 26th. Is there anything we need to do for that levy hearing? Thank you for clarifying that. Regular session, board members, September the 26th at 6:30. If there's no further discussion, this meeting is adjourned at 8:54.